Outstanding. So let's call the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. Sorry, everyone, for getting started a few minutes late. Thank you for your patience. We will need approval for electronic participation. Mr. Need Rhodes will be joining via Zoom. So I would
I'll make a motion.
Alright. Motion and seconded. Is there any discussion? Are there any opposed? We will say that motion passes. And Mr. Need will join us as he's available. In the absence of the clerk, Mr. Chair, Mr. Administrator, you're prepared to call the roll?
I am, yes sir.
Outstanding.
Ms. Williams. Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Hardwood. Mr. Robinson is absent. Mr. Pierce.
Here.
Mr. Holder. Mr. Campbell.
Yeah.
And Chairman Brown.
Here.
You have a corner.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. So taking a look at the agenda, two things that I would like to add, just explicitly call out under unfinished business. One would be an update on the farmer's market from Ms. Williams, who's prepared to do that. And the second is an update on our search for an economic development director that will be conducted by Vice Chairman Holder. We would also like, under unfinished business, just to add some minimal discussion about the priority matrix that Mr. Rhodes just developed and I distributed about a week time ago. So if there's any other business that anybody would like to add to the agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Moved and seconded by Ms. Williams. Did I hear that? Any discussion? Are there any opposed? Hearing no opposition, we will consider the meeting agenda adopted. We really appreciate our guest here to speak to us tonight, Mr. Sanderson from Davenport and Company, to lead us in a discussion about the bonding authority of the King William County Economic Development Authority. I believe that this is at our request. We simply wanted to get a primer and an update on what we can do. So if it would be helpful for introductions, we'll let you lead the way.
Sure. Again, I'm Jimmy Sanderson with Davenport Company. We are a financial advisor to the county. I've been at Davenport for about 18 years or so practicing in this world. Before that, I was actually a lawyer. At a law firm that did tax security work.
Thank you.
But we do a fair amount with economic development authorities as well. And so I've got some permanent experience with EDAs over the years. And there's been quite a few changes. And we're going to give a little background because there's some misconceptions out there about what EDAs can and can't do. We've had some conversations with the EDA, went back and went back to 2017 or so, I think. Former Administrator, a reader had set up a number of meetings that we had. And again, a gentleman named Dan Siebel, who was bond counsel to the county, also participated. Dan couldn't make it tonight. It's his wedding anniversary and he had other plans that so.
Mr. Sanderson, if I could just real quick forgive me for interrupting, if the need has joined the, so just to
I mark his attendance, sir.
Please forgive me, continue.
No worries. So there's some aspects in here that are a little bit more legal background. I've got some background on that, but I'm not a lawyer anymore, but happy to answer those questions if they come up about it. I'm happy to stop anytime. If there's areas that you would rather me talk about, I think that you're interested in. We can go any direction that you really like. But what we've got here are sort of some fundamentals that EDAs have had to work under, both from a federal tax perspective and also from a state law perspective as to what you can and can't do. So I'm over on page, turning on page two, sort of make some sections here. And why are political subdivisions such as EDAs even needed? And on slide three, there's a number of reasons, but one of the reasons that came up was there are state statutes as well as the constitutional limits on how local governments in Virginia can borrow money. And in particular, counties cannot use their general obligation pledge without going through a referendum. That's a general statement because there are a handful of counties in Virginia that can do that. But absent your ability, King William's ability to put their general obligation pledge behind debt, we have to come up with some other structures. And EDAs were one of those structures that are out there that we can use the EDA to actually issue debt that the county is ultimately responsible for, using some other security besides a general obligation pledge. I guess I should say, a general obligation pledge is one where the county is pledging to raise taxes to a level sufficient to pay that debt no matter what. So if you issue GO debt and you're having a budget shortfall, the county has to raise real estate taxes or the strongest pledge you can get out there. But there are other ways to do it. And smart lawyers and brilliant people have come up with those ways and they in particular use EDA. Jump over to page four. And so in response to that, they created a number of conduit issuers in Virginia. IDA, EDA, industrial development authority, economic development authority, it's the same entity, just by a different name. But there's also housing authorities, utility authorities, building authorities in the Commonwealth as well, that all have certain powers that they can do on behalf of local government.
Can I just interrupt?
Absolutely.
IDA and EDA, they're one of the same.
Exactly the same.
Yeah.
They were on, it was historically was industrial development authority. And we'll get into this a little bit, but that dates back to when IDAs were issuing a lot of debt for true industrial projects, for-profit types of entities to really spur economic development, bring manufacturing to local governments. As that changed, people didn't like that term as much. It didn't sound as forward looking maybe as people wanted it. So they changed it to economic development authority. But it's the same entity of the Virginia law. Over on page five. Again, as we said, EDAs and IDAs, same thing, just different names. The, going back to the 60s, you saw IDAs and EDAs issuing debt for all kinds of for-profit entities. And it allowed these for-profit entities to borrow on a tax exempt basis. The federal government looked at it as we're allowing this sort of tax benefit to these businesses because they're going to locate in certain jurisdictions, helps employment, obviously helps the coffers of the local governments. But you are funding for-profit nursing homes, McDonald's, fast food places, shopping centers, all that was being done with taxes and bonds through EDAs and IDAs. That started to change. We're on page six. There were some public hearing and public notices requirements that started coming up in 82. 83, they started to say, alright, well, we want to see what the fiscal impacts, and that's still a requirement today, the public hearings and the fiscal impacts. What are the actual benefits? And that's where there was maybe a little bit of sunshine that was put on these projects that were being funded on a tax exempt basis. And that started to go away. And so flipping over to page seven. In 1984, the federal government started to put limits on the total dollar amount that EDAs could issue debt for certain projects across the entire country. It's called volume cap. You had to apply to get that volume cap to actually issue debt. But 86 was the really the big revision. It limited almost all for-profit borrowings that IDAs could do. The only real exceptions were manufacturing facilities. And so they still wanted to try to allow local governments to try to lure some true manufacturing, have to actually make something to their jurisdiction. So that's still something that's allowed today. It's used very, very limited across the country. I haven't seen one done in Virginia in quite a long time. But it is still a possibility after 86. In the 90s, I think they realized that they had maybe gone a little too far. Over on page eight. And the IRS opened it up a little bit more. They allowed, still allowed manufacturing facilities. But they allowed exempt facilities as well, exempt facilities. Think like solid waste, for-profit, solid waste, power. And recently, even more recently, they've allowed for broadband. So for-profit companies are doing broadband command, carbon dioxide capture facilities. Haven't seen one of those ever, but theoretically possible. Again, for-profit entities, manufacturing still, that base true manufacturing of products is allowed. And then they allow for not-for-profits as well. And this frankly is the area where, other than governmental borrowings through EDAs, this is where we see the most of EDAs issuing debt on behalf of or for the benefit of not-for-profits in their state, in particular in their community. But they have to be 501(c)(3), not-for-profits, hospitals, nursing homes, YMCA's, private schools, colleges, those are the things we typically see. And some of the benefits to you from those in particular is you can, you, the EDA, can be paid a fee. And a lot of jurisdictions use those as revenue streams for them to do things. Other things that you might want to do, but you've got a lot of powers. We'll talk a little bit about that as well. The federal tax code allows an EDA to charge up to one-eighth of 1% of the par amount that's outstanding each year to the, we call it conduit borrower to go to them. So let's just say Hampton City College wanted to borrow on a tax exempt basis, which they do. And they often use the Farmville EDA or the Prince Edward County EDA. But they, when they do, they pay a fee to the EDA to issue this bond because it's ultimately a benefit to them. They're borrowing on a tax exempt basis versus a taxable basis, lower interest rate to them. And so they're willing to pay a fee to the EDA up there. And again, you can use that for whatever purpose that you like. You can take that fee, you can do it annually, so whatever amount is outstanding each year, you can give one-eighth of 1%. Or you can take it in a lump sum upfront. We sort of look at the cash flows, what they would be over the life alone, and P V it back to today's dollars and you can take up to that present value amount on day one. That's a, that's a good way for local governments to generate some revenue for their EDA. Now, I'll tell you, there's not like a, there's not a marketplace out there where EDAs say we're available for that type of project. Oftentimes, it comes from people like me, a financial advisor, who may be working with a not-for-profit or another entity that's involved in these are called bond counsel. Again, they're there to deliver the tax opinion. There are certain reasons why you may want to go to a different jurisdiction than say where that not-for-profit is located. For example, under the federal tax rules, any jurisdiction can issue what we call bank qualified debt. And that just allows you to get a slightly lower interest rate than if it's non-bank qualified. But bank qualified limitations revolve around how much taxes and debt the jurisdiction has issued in any calendar year. So if, let's take, stick with Hampton Sydney and Prince Edward County. If Prince Edward County has issued more than 10 million of tax exempt debt the year that Hampton Sydney would like to borrow through the EDA, they can't, Hampton Sydney can't issue it on a bank qualified basis. And so they may go looking for an issuer in another jurisdiction that the county hasn't issued $10 million in that calendar year. And so they would go and look around. They'd probably go to jurisdictions around where Hampton Sydney is located. But certainly you can go outside of that as well. It has to be within the Commonwealth of Virginia. There's some lawyers that believe that there has to be some nexus between the jurisdiction and the borrower. There are others that say it doesn't. It just has to be in Virginia and potentially could benefit the citizens of, say, King William County. I'm sure there's citizens here going to Hampton Sydney. It doesn't have to be a large nexus, but there has to be some connection. Some lawyers believe others don't. So that's, that is sort of the for-profit and the not-for-profit side of what an EDA can do from a debt perspective. I guess maybe the other thing to make sure we make clear, when an EDA does these conduit borrowings, whether they're for the county or a not-for-profit or a for-profit entity, you have no liability whatsoever on the debt. You are purely what we call a conduit issuer and allow the debt ultimately to be tax exempt. But there's all kinds of stuff that we put in the documents to make clear that the EDA and the county are not legally liable for the debt obligation that the ultimate, the conduit borrower, we call them, say Hampton City in my example, would be responsible for. So.
Who is responsible?
It's the, it's the local, it's the borrower. I mean, the Hampton City College would be legally responsible for it. Or the manufacturing facility would be legally responsible for it, but the county would not.
But in the case of the fault, it's the county if we issue it. So let's say we did something in the next town over and it was a business and they thought they were the one giving them the conduit. Aren't we still responsible?
Zero.
So then just the lender, who gave?
The lender is looking to the ultimate borrower. Whether that's Hampton City College or it's a manufacturing facility. They are not looking to you for repayment. And the documents documented clearly that the IDA or the EDA is not responsible, has no responsibility in the bank. Cannot come back to you and try to get payment from you, that can only go to the conduit borrower. So again, think of it as you're sort of a pass-through entity. The reason that the entities are going to you is to avail themselves of being able to borrow on a tax exempt basis, a little bit lower interest rate. The only entities that can issue debt on a tax exempt basis in the United States are governmental entities. And the EDA is a governmental entity. And so that's the method that we attach the tax exempt status to the debt is because you issue it. But the obligation and the person responsible for paying it is not the EDA, it is the underlying borrower. Now, you could, the EDA could, under your own authority, borrow money. And you could make yourself responsible for that debt for a number of different things. But you would have to, there wouldn't be a conduit borrower in those instances. It would just truly be the EDA going to a bank and borrowing money. And you would be, then you would be legally responsible for repaying that debt. But the examples I've given here, where there's an entity coming to you to ask you to issue debt on their behalf, they are responsible, you are not. But if you borrow on your own, for whatever reason, then you would, then you would be responsible for that.
So there's the advantage, what we can offer. I understand.
That's right. Your ability to issue that debt on a tax exempt basis. Hampton City College can't go out on their own, even though they're a not-for-profit. They can't go out on their own and borrow on a tax exempt basis unless they partner with an entity like an EDA.
Not to go backwards, but could you maybe just go back and clarify, so that we have manufacturing, nonprofit, 501(c)(3) is like universities, hospitals, those sorts of things. Remind me what an exempt facility is?
Yeah, it's, it's, there's a whole list of them. But power plants, Virginia Power, they do a lot of borrowings across the state, solid waste type facilities. It could be airports or exempt facilities. And then the sort of the new ones that have come up with the broadband. And that's something that I think you could theoretically see, although I think you guys are even doing it on your own. But broadband is one, and then carbon dioxide capture facilities, which I don't pretend to know what that is. I can guess, but I haven't seen one of those. So it is, they are the types of facilities that the federal government has deemed worthy of borrowing on a tax exempt basis. But they want to try to promote those types of entities because there's some public good for them, is I guess how I would think about it. But that list does change sometimes. Again, those two new categories that were added just here real recently. Page nine, again, we do see EDAs working with local governments to borrow on their behalf. And you can borrow on behalf of King William County for public buildings, courts, schools, infrastructure improvements, really anything that the county needs, the EDA can issue debt on their behalf. And the way that those, we'll get into this a little bit later, but the way those typically work, again, EDA is not responsible for the debt. They're issuing it, but there's also an agreement where the county is saying that we will support that, support that debt as well, typically through a support agreement where they are saying we're, we are morally obligated, to use a generic term, to repay that debt. And lenders trust that in Virginia. Local governments are, have been using this for quite a long time. And they're willing to lend on the pure promise to pay by the county. Sometimes we'll add collateral to it, and we've done that with the county as well. So if there's a courthouse, for example, being built or administrative buildings being built, that the EDA issues the debt, we'll often put the leasehold interest, but it's some type of security interest in the asset that's being built. That's sort of there as the stick to make sure that the board of supervisors appropriates that debt service each year. And in those instances, again, the EDA is, money doesn't even really pass through the EDA. The EDA assigns its rights to receive the payment to the lender who ultimately lends them the money. So the money doesn't even flow through the EDAs.
But is that, sorry, go ahead.
That's the EDA receive a fee on that too, or no?
No, no. Yeah, that's usually where you're working in partnership with the county to help effect, really hopefully the best, best interest rate that we can for the citizens of the county. So no, we don't typically pay the EDA.
But so the reason for going through the EDA as a conduit or as a pass-through entity would be to avoid the general obligation?
That's correct.
The best of the referendum, we wouldn't have.
If they don't want to do a referendum, then they will typically, there's some other entities that the county has used before and others do as well. You can go to the Virginia Resources Authority, which is a state issuer that issues debt on behalf of local governments. The Virginia Public School Authority is another one that we've done. They issue debt just for school purposes. But theoretically, if there were a good reason and that those, either the timing of those transactions didn't work and we wanted to try to do it on our own without going to state agencies, my advice would be to utilize the EDA and go to the lender and borrow through that.
You had a long interest in public school, I know you did some law on the school. Now, we get a better interest rate through the EBA for schools and the WIBK and VIKL?
No, you would have not gotten, I doubt you would have gotten a better interest rate than going through, because we went through the PSA, I believe. The, the Virginia Public School Authority, who borrows, helps local governments borrow for school projects, they borrow in the public markets and they borrow using the state's moral obligation behind it. So the Commonwealth of Virginia stands behind those bonds. And so the rating on those bonds is AAA, there's actually two tranches, so AAA and AA. And so the highest rating that you can get on debt. If we were to go through, if we had gone through the EDA for those school projects, we would have had to have gone to a bank one to get the loan. The county doesn't carry a public rating, so we couldn't go into the public markets. And it's not just interest rate, there's a couple of other things too. Banks oftentimes can't give us fixed rates for as long as we would like, and then we can get in the public market. So sort of your duration of the rate being guaranteed is better in the public markets through the PSA. And I'd suggest that the interest rate would be better through the PSA probably than we would be able to get from banks.
Sure. So if we were to pursue theoretically an infrastructure improvement project whereby we were trying to extend water, sewer, anything to any part of the county, where would you recommend we look first before perhaps seeing whether or not the EDA could secure some sort of?
I mean, if the county was going to do it? Yeah. So the county could go with that through the Virginia Resources Authority, which we've done before. VRA, think about it, they can pretty much do anything, they can do schools, anything that the PSA doesn't do. So VRA won't usually do schools unless it was a small part of a bigger project. But VRA can pretty much do any project that a local government wants to do other than schools. So that would be, and VRA also, again, is a state agency, so they carry high ratings as well and they can have access to the public market. So those are two state-level issuers that we often go to for that purpose. Now, my memory is when we, we have done stuff through the EDA in the past. Didn't go back and look at that, and personally that was before your time here.
Courts over here were done through.
Did we do that through the EDA?
Court.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, so it's not uncommon for there to be situations where, from whether it's a timing perspective or whether it's we're not worried about the length of time for the line that we would go to the EDA versus one of the state issuers. Starting on page 10, I wanted to maybe talk a little bit about what the state law has and controls really with the EDA. This is where I would make Dan do a lot of the presentation. But the general purpose of the EDA is laid out on page 11. I think this is sometimes important to go back and look at. You know, acquire, own, lease, dispose of properties, make loans, which is something that the county cannot do. You can make loans to private for-profit entities if you want. But ultimately, you're there to promote industry, develop trade within Commonwealth of Virginia and obviously in particular in King William County. But this is the purpose as laid out under state statute of each IDA, EDA, the Commonwealth. Page 12, this is a little, a little in the weeds, but obviously you're governed by board of directors. But they are appointed by the governing body of the county, seven members, typically residents of the locality, but could be an adjoining locality as well. Four-year stagger terms. Again, you're here to promote King William County under the powers that are delegated to you. Page 13 and 14, I laid out.
Just one question, Jim, a joining locale. So somebody from King and Queen could sit on this board?
That's correct. Now, it might not be a reason that they would want to do that.
Yeah.
Because your board supervisor appoints it, but technically that's true.
And.
As long as, as long as adjoining county, the state law allows it. Up to your board supervisors. But I've seen that in one instance where a person was, they lived in one county, moved to another county, and they remained on the board. I think they actually remained on there for reappointment.
That would be the reason. I mean, we would just go get somebody from King and Queen that lived over there all their life and bring them over here.
I mean, unless they, maybe they had some expertise that you couldn't find somebody that wanted to serve. I may, I could maybe see that as a good reason to bring somebody on.
There's a resident of King and Queen who had a business down in Salin.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. But the state law allows it. Slide 13, this is where we, sometimes when we go and we're working on projects, in particular, maybe like economic development projects with the county, we've got to go back and look and look at the actual powers that you have under the state statute. Virginia is called a Dillon's Rule state. And that means that you only have the powers that are specifically delegated to you by the state statute. So if the statute is silent as to something that you want to do, unless it is something that would be required to do the other things that are specifically enumerated, a lawyer is going to tell you, you can't do it. So that's why we look at exactly what the General Assembly has delegated to EDAs to do. And so I've listed them here. You know, we don't need to go through all of them, but I think some of them are more important to others than others. But again, obviously the ability to enter into a contract. You can enter into contracts with other entities. That's a pretty important power that you have. You can acquire real and personal property. You can charge and collect rent. You can sell, convey, donate facilities that you own if you want to. You can issue bonds. And some of the times that we, some places that we've seen this take place is oftentimes EDAs are used as the economic development arm of a local government. And I think I've used this example before, Chesapeake County is an example with the metal building technology park. That they began to acquire that land 30 years ago, probably, I'm definitely not sure. 30 years ago, they acquired that land, but they acquired it through their EDA. The county obviously came up with the funds, but they had the EDA buy and own that property. And then when they were marketing that property, that allowed them to either donate the land to a for-profit business that might be coming in there as an incentive to come. to a for-profit business that might be coming in there as an incentive to come to Chesapeake County. The county couldn't have done that. They could sell it to them at a fair market price, but they couldn't donate or give it to them. And obviously then, that, that development worked really well over time. And I think that the, the EDA on the sale, they gave away a lot of the land, but they certainly gave it away at, at, at maybe rates that were lower than the building market rates because they were getting a big manufacturing facility or something like that in Chesapeake County. On page 14, you can mortgage and, and pledge your facility, so you can, you can buy something, put a mortgage on it, help offset the paying for it. And I think the, the last point there is, is one of the, the more important ones for EDAs is the ability to make loans and grants. And we see that a lot with sort of incentive programs that local government may do. They often use the EDA to, to come up with a economic development incentive program. And you can then give, whether it's cash grants to, to entities to come to your jurisdiction. We'll often see it with, like, real estate tax abatement, things that people do. The local government can't give real estate tax abatements to, to lure an entity to come, come to your county because everybody has to be charged the same real estate tax rate, for example. But the EDA can enter into a grant, a grant agreement with that, with that company that says every year, if you employ X number of people or you, and you build X dollars amount of property within the, within the county, we'll rebate up to whatever percentage you want to, it could be a hundred percent of your real estate taxes. Now, that's usually done in conjunction with the local government, because it's the local government, they, they can give you money. So they could give you the equivalent amount that you are then giving a performance grant back to the, the for-profit entity. So that's the, the, that's one of the really important powers that you have that a local government, a county, city, town does not have, the ability to make, make loans or grants of that type. One of the things that you don't have is the power of eminent domain, and that's come up in the past where pre-EDAs have wanted to do things that local governments want them to, but you can't, you can't take my hand the way that, the way that local governments can through the process of eminent domain. Page 15, these are some things that apply to you. We don't need to go through these, but conflicts of interests, procurement acts does apply with the exception of authority facilities, which is another reason that, that local governments will often use EDAs. If you're building an authority facility, which is a defined term under the state code, which is a whole litany of different things, you don't have to go through most of the same procurement process that the, the local government has to go through. And that can be done for, for reasons that, speed or time in particular is one of the reasons they do that. Freedom of Information Act, you are subject to that for you. But there are exclusions that an IDA, EDA have that a local government may not have as well. I think about discussions related to economic development, you don't want, IBM doesn't want it to be known that they're talking to you about coming to King William County. And so those types of exclusions are allowed, if you're talking about, talking with a, a for-profit entity that may come to your county, but you don't want to, they don't want it to be known, and you don't want it to be known that you're talking about. Uh, starting on page 16, this is one of the things that, that, when I have these conversations, I think it's really important that it's the relationship between the EDA and the governing body. And so you are all appointed by, by members of the board, the board in total ultimately. And I know we're on page 17, but it's, it really has to be a relationship between, between the two entities. Again, you're often called, Mr. Williams is asking to, to fund local government projects. You don't often ask for, for payment like you would do a for, for-profit company, because there is that, that relationship that you have between them.
We'll ask for the fee.
You can. You can. The, again, the government financing side of things, again, those types of, of lease purchase, moral obligation, pledge that, I'll define in a minute, but, but the county would be ultimately the one to pay the, the, the loan that you were to issue on their behalf. Page 18, we talked a little bit about the, the moral obligation that the county would have if they were to go through the EDA. That's a, this is a non-binding obligation on the county, but again, it's one that's accepted by lenders, in particular in Virginia, because we have a strong record of actually future boards agreeing to appropriate debt service on, on obligation that a prior board incurred. But if they were to, if they were to ever fail to make a payment, which to my knowledge has only happened once in Virginia, if they were ever failed to make payment, they, their ratings would, would go down considerably. The, the credit ratings that they had on would, would be, would be dinged immediately. You would forfeit the collateral and your ability to, to borrow would be greatly impaired. Let me just clear, when you want to say forfeit the collateral, when I talk about leasehold interest, you would be, the county would be excluded from that property during the lease period if they were to, to fail to pay. The only time it's ever happened was in June Vista, Virginia, where they, they funded a golf course and they went through the EDA. But the county decided that the golf course was losing money, they were saying, well, we're not going to pay on that anymore. And they failed to appropriate that debt. And their ability to borrow is still limited, and that was probably 15 years ago that they did that. It was, it was a big deal in Virginia that the local government did that. I would be standing here at the podium, speaking very sternly to the board supervisors if they were to ever, ever do that, and I don't expect that they would. Page 19, again, your, your mission obviously is to, is to help promote economic development in the county. And obviously you're there to, to complement the board supervisors. But that last point is, is one that's an important one. And really, your ability to accomplish a lot of your, of your, of your goals is subject to funding typically from the local government, right? So Chesapeake EDA's ability to, to, to work through the Meteville Technology Park was, was directly dependent upon their getting funds from, from Chesapeake County Board Supervisors. So it's, it's, it's really a working relationship in trying to come up with, with projects that the county believes are important to the county, that you believe are important to the county. And oftentimes that will require a, a, a close relationship between the two, because ultimately the board supervisor has to buy into what you want to do if they are going to be the, the deep pockets behind it. And I heard you talk about an economic development director, those types of, of roles, how, how obviously are the liaison between the two very often?
What are like some small base hits that EDAs can do to both low interest, taxes, loans? What are some that you've seen?
Yeah, go to the last page.
Sorry?
It's okay. So not all of these involve loans, but, and I even heard you mention the farmer's market, that's the first one on, on there. EDAs often are, are in charge of that. Industrial parks we talked about, that's a little bit of a bigger, a bigger piece. But industrial park doesn't have to be Meteville Technology Park. Oftentimes, it's a, a pad site that has certain attributes. It might not be a, it might not be a data center that we see in the big places that require a lot of water. But if you do have access to water and sewer on a site, and that's something that doesn't cost a ton of money to, to get ready, to be cleared and have the water sewer access to it, and that's certainly something that you can play a role in. Again, it, it, it costs money to do it, or usually it's going to be the, the county is going to be behind that to, to help pay for it. But we certainly have seen projects where an EDA is, is working with the local government to do just that small site, one, one type of building. The shell buildings also listed on there, we've, we've done that where we've built, a local government has actually built the shell billing, building and then gone out and marketed it. And so those are, those are ones where still going to cost some money, but it's, it's, it's not, you know, as grand as a 3,000 acre industrial park. But it could just be, be just one pad site, for example, with a shell, with a shell building on it. You know, the business incubator thing, again, that's sort of the grant type stuff that I'm talking about, where you can give, you can give grants or loans to smaller businesses to either grow or maybe ideally to relocate to, to the county. And they can be, again, they can be grants, they can be loans, loans can be forgiven if they meet certain performance metrics that you were to lay out, whether it's the number of employees they have or amount of money that they're really producing to the county, that's probably the goal is to bring businesses, want to bring jobs and that produce revenue to the general fund that can then support the rest of the county. One of the goals that local governments have is to really have a diverse revenue stream, so you're not totally reliant on real estate taxes in particular. And the more economic development you have in a jurisdiction, the more revenue that you have generated from, you know, commercial, industrial type, type of entity, business entities, the less you're relying on individuals and payment of real estate tax. So, I mean, those are some examples of smaller ones that I've, that I've seen. And some of the things on the right, a little less, less money produced into the county, more just benefits to the county, the, the annual chamber dinners, the awards for scholarships for graduate students. The, the, one of the bottom incentives in blighted areas, that's one where, again, the county may have a desire to see an area improved. And they want to work with the EDA to help incentivize private businesses to move into those, those areas. And so it's, in my mind, it, it is, if you can provide some incentives through an EDA that make it cheaper for a company to locate here versus King and Queen, then, then you can do that. And it may, may cost a little bit of money, but there, the, the local government is just going to weigh the, the pros and cons and the cost, cost benefit of it. And we, we work with, with them a lot for that. What's the cost benefit? So if we give up 25% of our real estate, real estate taxes that we're going to get from this, this entity for, for five years, but we get a new business in here and we get 75% of real estate tax and that rolls off, and that can be a win-win for both the private business and the, and the county. County can't do that without an EDA. They have to go through an EDA to, to have the contract to give those types of incentives.
Well, when it comes to acquiring land and stuff like that, or putting up a shell building, we can take monies and go out there and purchase it. Is there a way to almost borrow the money from a loan so that we're not outlaying that, what number, $100,000? So we can, it's not a great thing at that point, it's a.
You're just, you're just, you're buying the land yourself.
For us to acquire, maybe taking that next step as the putting a shell building on it. But what we can borrow, the monies through?
So you can borrow money, you got to find somebody to lend it to you. And lending it to you is, the, the real catch will be, who's going to repay it, right? So if, if you were to borrow money and you had a revenue stream already of making it up $100,000 a year, then a, a, a bank would look at that and go, all right, well, how, how creditworthy is that revenue stream that's going to continue? And, and what's the value of it versus what I'm lending and what's your annual, annual mortgage say would be on that? If you don't have that wherewithal, that's where we would, we would often see the county coming behind it and saying, we, the county, will, will back this line. And we have done that. But the county board has to be comfortable, obviously, doing that and thinking that what the EDA has come up with as a, as an idea, as a project is one that is going to be successful. And that you can convince them that's going to be successful and ultimately will pay off for the county. And you get a better shot at getting them to back it up. But you still have to have, think about it, is any other way any lender would look at it? You got to have, just because you're a governing body, you got to have a revenue stream of something that you can go to them and say, we have the ability to repay this loan. And then oftentimes that's through the backing of the local government itself. Yeah. That's, that's the really, that's it on the presentation side, but I'm happy to answer any, any other questions that you have. Again, I think, I think having an economic development director is something that's, that will be very helpful because they, hopefully they will be somebody that has done that in, in Virginia before, understand the roles of EDAs, their, their, their powers and, and what they can and can't do. And then also they're, they're really good about being able to interact with, with other entities that, that are on the lookout for ways that local governments can help. And I've seen, Percy probably knows better than me because you've been doing this just as long, not longer. But, you know, it, it is at the state level, having the ability to draw economic development projects. And there's certainly some that, that we as a county couldn't get because we don't have the wherewithal to provide water and sewer that they might need. But there certainly are projects that are looking in different jurisdictions, but you got to have the infrastructure there for them to be able to, to move in. Even some of the smaller ones in the Virginia Economic Development Partnership, obviously plays a part in, in bringing business to Virginia. And you're, and economic development director will be somebody that will work with them, I would assume directly. That's a lot of stuff.
Yeah. Did anybody else have some questions in general?
So just coming, and thank you, and for, so getting back to the water and sewer, which Chairman Brown brought earlier, if we were running through a stretch of, say, mileage along our highway corridor, there, there's obviously grants that we can have that can offset that, but for a borrowing state, like some project that that could cost millions, what would be our best way to go about that?
To borrow, borrow for that as the EDA or the county?
Uh, question, I guess that's, that's, I guess.
I mean, the best way to do it would be through the county. I mean, the county may ultimately come back, if the county wants to move forward with the project and back it, they may decide to go through the EDA. Or they may just have to go through the Virginia Resources Authority, for example. But if, if, again, if you were trying, if you, the EDA, were trying to take on a project yourself, get water sewer to a, a certain area that you think is, is prime for economic development, you would, I would, I would guess, not knowing what your revenue stream is, but I suspect I've got a pretty good idea of it, you would probably need to go to the county to ask them to, to back whatever you want to do, get them behind the project. So ultimately, the county would be repaying that, that debt.
So just thinking about some of the things, we, we've got a lot of, think about what's happening in the county right now. We've got a lot of housing development. Is housing considered an exempt facility?
No.
No.
No, there could be some type of, maybe some type of lower, of low or middle income housing, maybe. I can, I can follow up on that, but general housing would not be.
Sure. So if there is a, if there was a, if there was a senior housing project that was somehow income restricted, there could be the potential.
If it were, if it were a not-for-profit developer. Good. And we, there are lots of not-for-profit, we call them continuing, but CCRC is continuing care retirement facility.
Sure.
And a lot of them are not-for-profit. A lot of the, the nursing housing, I see nursing house, you see, a lot of those are for-profit. But the, the ones that have independent living, assisted living, and then nursing is sort of the continual care that they provide, a lot of those are not-for-profit. They were started by religious association, we have to pick out that not-for-profit, I would agree, and they could borrow through the watch.
So I guess, one of the things that we're trying to, to, to get to is, is a real strategy. And we, we're very hopeful that the economic development director can help us kind of with that liaison work to receive inquiries from outside businesses, go out and try to find them. I think the, the priority for us, from, from my perspective, is trying to identify ways that we can be ready to use the powers of the authority to help facilitate a deal, you know, should one be on the table. So just maybe speaking from experience working with counties and localities and, and EDAs in the past, how do you recommend? You know, I remember a couple of years ago, we did the deal with Nessie Purina, where we did this kind of grant back of the, I think it was a tool tax.
Yeah.
And it, it seems to me like, like that may be an opportunity for us to explore with the county, once the economic development director is on, of what kind of businesses would we want to incentivize? How would we do that? How do we tee up that conversation so that we can be ready to go? Should we want to help entity X expand or grow or locate in the county?
Right.
So it's trying to think, how would you recommend that we kind of explore what we might be open to doing so that we can create an environment whereby that kind of. explore what we might be open to doing so that we can create an environment whereby that kind of project doesn't die by virtue of us not being prepared?
Yeah, you know, and I think I think a lot of it probably has to do with the planning side on the board side, right? So I suspect that the board wants to have a certain part of the county grow in a certain direction or a certain type of development. And that's going to be part of your your long-term comprehensive plan, right? Um and so if there is an area in the comprehensive plan where the county has said, we want this type of development, economic development here. Um and I think in particular, if if the county board is on um on board with um providing those types of incentives, um uh then you've got a tool to go out and market it, right? Your economic development director, a tool to go out and market it. I think absent their ability to know that the board is is willing to make those types of concessions, um I think it probably makes it difficult for the economic developer to go out and go out and find somebody maybe interested in county. And maybe I can provide you some incentives. And then when they come to the county, the the board says, we're not, we're not interested in providing those those incentives. So I think those that have um sort of a process laid out on what what the county board is at least willing to um to consider um probably are more successful than those that are just randomly bringing things to the board that they they have to consider as sort of one-offs. And whether that, personally, have you ever seen like a, where a board would adopt something that um that sort of is is there, economic development, I won't call it policy, but something where they would say, and these are the types of businesses that we want to incentivize, these are the types of incentives that we're willing to look at. Um I don't know that I've ever seen that, but I don't know that that means they don't exist. Just because I haven't seen them.
But in general, I mean, it seems like a a policy conversation at the very least about whether our priority is tax revenue, whether our priority is job creation, whether our priority is shiny buildings, I mean, whatever that might be to to just start to push the conversation so that we can create the environment where we're all on the same page.
It I I think, I mean, I think I've I've made that point a bunch. You've got to be on the same page with the board, uh with supervisors. Um because just otherwise, you're you're hanging out there trying to do stuff, but you really don't have the the entity that's often there to support you economically in particular, which is the the board supervisor.
Mr. Chairman, let me, because I've heard this come up a couple of times, if I if I could add, I mean, I think one of the I'll call it a strategy from this authority is they understand the partnership with the county. But having an independent of a revenue stream that can eventually create a larger budget that could lead to additional investment.
Right.
I think that's where the authority is right now and seeking that opportunity. Yep. So it, what's your thoughts on on getting that started? Maybe that doesn't belong with the chairman asked, but I think that's the that.
Yeah, I mean, that that is, it's sort of you have to start somewhere. Um and um I guess in order to even, in order to even have, we talked about the ability to, you can charge rents, you can lease property that you own. You got to first own it. Um and I think that's where, to to begin, you've got to have you got to have the county come behind you at least first and say, we're going to support you with this project. We think this is a good project. We're going to support you with it. And if it pays off, and let's just say you you give tenants and it's a um it's a, it's a, it's a good, a good revenue stream going forward. Hopefully, it's it's more, it's enough to pay whatever it costs to to acquire it. And then you've got some profit. And that profit stream is something then that you can use uh going forward. I think it's the county, as long as as you can demonstrate that you're going to be able to pay that that obligation, whatever that cost was to acquire it. And then um and then your plans to utilize those additional revenues, the pro- call the profit above it um for whatever other purposes you want. But you got to start somewhere. I think absent I don't think I know, absent having that county behind you to begin with, to start the business almost, um it's going to be difficult for you to go out and get a loan uh in order to acquire anything or to 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 put the infrastructure in there to build it. Now, you could um, you could get uh entities to come through and borrow through you and and charge them that fee because they're uh they're either a manufacturing type facility or they are a a not-for-profit that needs the ability to borrow it through an I D A somewhere. Um but frankly, my experience is those are really just one-off type things. Um there aren't a lot of E D As out there that market themselves as, hey, come to us, we're we're willing to issue your your debt because the the first place that people go to are the the E D A and the jurisdiction where the not-for-profit is. So if I'm in the city of Richmond, I usually go to the city of Richmond E D A or Enrico E D A or Tresco E D A. Um and so the only reason that they would go outside of their jurisdiction is if there was a problem on their ability to borrow it through them. Um so I don't think that that is really a, I wouldn't describe that as a business plan, uh because it really is, it's a lot beyond your control. Uh but I think if the, I think the 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 best way that it would happen would be some type of partnership with the county to do something, one, obviously, that's beneficial to the county. And it could start small and and grow um over time too. Um but you're going to need, you're going to need that sort of that parent guarantee uh to start with.
I think, I think the chairman alluded site development is is something that's a topic here all the time.
Yep.
And I believe that the steps, if I understand them, would be to identify either property or a location. Seek the county's input. Seek the county's funding. And as you know, you already have a certain amount of money already appropriated to you uh from years past. Develop the site. Recruit whatever is going to be on that site at a profit. The money returns to the E D A. And the county gets the benefit of the taxes, the employment and any other service that it would provide. I think the table was set for that. And I think I've told most of individually, I, it's just, it's just getting where the priority is and what property it is. And I've always encouraged you to start with one or two, and then we'll, we'll see how the tests go and and move on. But Jim, you've been, you're, thank you. You're right on with what you've explained. I think this is the time for this group, especially with new personnel to really move forward.
How would the loans usually last for? Yeah, I guess loans term loan, we're talking five years, ten years, four years?
The, it really depends what it's for and what's your what you're out, what your sort of end game is, right? So um we've done, we've done shell buildings where we finance them over a a five-year period, for example, because we think interest only, because we think within that five-year period, we're going to sell it to I'll say we, the board of government, they're going to sell it to uh a full-profit entity that's going to come in there. And maybe they sell it at um some price lower than uh market value, maybe, but that's still greater than whatever they paid for it. Um so but but you could also finance things for much longer. Because again, you can lease property to uh uh a full-profit entity as well if you want to. So if someone were to come in and say, look, we want to, we want to build this um, oh, build something on a piece of property, you could have financed that property for thirty years if you wanted to. If you could get a lender to to go thirty years. Um and you could do a long-term lease of that real estate to an entity, but it would build something on it. Um so there's no, there may be an outside limit on what you can do under state code, but that may be like forty years. Um but I think it just depends on what you want to do. Um you can do a shorter loan or you can do a longer one as well.
There's a lot of tools in the pool box.
Yeah, yeah. And you know, you you don't have to, again, this is all subject to negotiation from the lender, but you could do it interest only as well, uh not start repaying principal till you have it till later. Um plus you, uh depending on what you, what your, what you ultimately think you're going to do with that property.
So in a scenario like county administrator suggested, where we were seeking the county support to purchase a property, develop it, even as a site worker, put up a shelf, um we could, rather than we could see some, some support to do that. But if borrowing was involved, if if our intention was to lease that property, it may be beneficial to us to amortize the loan over a thirty-year period.
True.
But if we were
Lower the, lower the annual rate.
Maximizing the profit back to the E D A so that we can put that money back into scholarship programs or support the farmers market or whatever we wanted to do. Um alternatively, if we were seeking kind of lump sums, we would do a shorter-term interest-only payment with the intent to sell that property
Right.
um to a for-profit business and then capitalize on the windfall and do whatever we wanted.
I mean, we're doing, I'm working with um city of Covington, Allegheny County. Those two, um they have a combined E D A between the two jurisdictions. And they're doing um something very similar to that. They're, they've purchased land and they're clearing it, supplying the water and sewer to it. The jurisdictions are paying for it, but they're using that E D A as the entity that actually owns it and is doing the um improvements to the site.
So just theoretically, what we need is a, we need a, we need a site and we need at least a general confidence in in that someone's going to come behind us and either rent that site or purchase it from us.
Yeah.
And it would be really helpful for us to have some semblance of confidence that we can market what we've done in some way to attract the entity to come and do that.
That's right. I mean, and it's almost like, you know, it's it's attracts, attract new business to the county, which is is great. Um because it's new revenue to the county. Um or it's to incentivize a business to stay in the county. Those are, those are sort of the two things that we see that maybe, I mean, this is, well, I'm going to, I'm going to go get a deal across the the county line, I'm going to go to a different county. Um and then oftentimes, the E D As are there to help incentivize them to stay. So then it's not a lost revenue to the county.
Last question, I promise. What, what do you see as the turnaround on projects? Like, so I knew you'd deal with a lot of counties, so it could be something as small as a tractor supplier, some obviously like hospital for six years. But how reactive do you see counties and the and the time it takes? And then possibly the customers, the tenants, how could they want something to happen?
The 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 tenants want to know that it'll happen quickly. They're usually, they're searching for sites across whether it's the whole Kamala, Virginia, it could be the Eastern Sea Board, or it could be a certain area within, say, Virginia or not. They typically want to know that the site is ready to go when they want to make a decision. They're, they're, they're making that decision based on the ability to do it right now. We've got clients who have um sites ready, but they don't have the water and sewer there yet. They're waiting for the 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 entity to come to them. And then like, then we'll put it in the water and sewer because it's expensive. Uh but the the private business is saying, well, I I can't wait two years for you to build the uh infrastructure that I need to be there. And so I'll go somewhere else. Um and so, I mean, the the entities that are willing to put up the money and have it be ready are the ones that can do it quickly. I mean, I think, again, your economic developer, if you're going to hire them, will be able to tell you better than me. But it's a, it's a pretty quick turnaround that they, that they would want. The the private side. So you kind of, more, the more you prepare, the 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 veteran. Person is out of finding.
Yeah, we can send out, Jim, the contact information.
Mr. Ashcraft might have to help me on this. On part of the planning, on a planning commission, all the sites, you have to wait for them to tell you whether it's approved for industry or whatever. I'm talking about long-term, trying to get, if we bought something to put some, a building up, we don't know the industry. Will the planning commission allow us to do that? Or they got to have a definitely answer, what are we looking to put there?
Well, the comprehensive plan, I think.
It spells out, but it don't let you do that until you have something in hand.
Well, I mean, the zoning of the property is already there, except unless they want to, unless they want to change it. Um so I think the, from the planning commission perspective, they know where they want things to go. There's housing here, industrial here, commercial here. And whatever we choose, whatever project the E D A would choose to enter into it, then all they, planning commission just has to make sure that it meets the requirements of their zoning ordinance and all the other things that uh go along with it.
Do we have to go to the planning commission to get property A here?
No, no, no. Your your relationship would exist only with the board supervisor.
So we can rezone or something?
You can't rezone it.
Oh, sorry.
But you, but I thought he's asking the question, how do you, how do you?
So from our purposes, we would want to find, if we had a, if we had an a, an idea or a proposal, that what we have is this idea that we want to do, us, we want to get a site ready. However, we would define that, whether that's a shell building, bringing utilities to it, whatever we wanted to do, just clear it, level it, prepare it, do whatever. We would want to go and find a piece of property that was zoned for whatever we wanted to put there.
Well, well, you would hope to, but let's say you found something in in agriculture that you wanted zoned to be one, as an example. Well, in partnership, the first step has to be the planning commission to get a result. And then you take over, and then you and the county take it over from there.
Okay, okay. That's why I was
Yeah, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. But if it's already zoned, then you don't have, you bypass that step.
Okay.
And the planning commission, right now, they're eager, they're fighting at the bullet and looking at rezoning properties.
They are. That's correct.
That's that's one.
Well, I didn't know whether we had to do the rezoning, you know, before that, that's why I was asked the question.
I don't think that would be a problem because they, they're running the mood.
Before we let our guest speaker head on out, thank you for being here. I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Rhodes didn't have any questions. You are, of course, welcome to stay to the end, Bobby.
Appreciate it. Good to talk with you.
Thank you very much. This is very, very helpful. I I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Ashcraft for for arranging this this visit. I think that this was really helpful to kind of bring us back to a level set of kind of what are our powers, what can we do? And then as we continue the conversation about strategy and priorities, um really just making sure that we're ready to strike when the opportunity um is is in front of us. So again, thank you, sir, for your time tonight.
I'll give them out and send them, email everybody with this information.
Need can't unmute. I don't know. That's something that, yeah, you can just. All right. Need, you should be prepared to participate if you have a comment.
It's working now. Yeah, okay. So it was, it was just locked. So I'm good.
Thank you. Okay, so back to the uh thank you, number five, for the presentation. Again, just really hoping that we all get on the same page about how we can uh leverage the powers of the authority to make our priorities happen. Um moving on to number six, uh a report was distributed via email. Thank you to Colson of the county for distributing that. Mr. Campbell is the treasurer. I give you the opportunity to editorialize as much as you would like.
All right. Well, I, the the report we all received this afternoon, I looked it over. And then I'm, so I got a lot of today and uh Stephen and I have been right setting up a bank account, or two bank accounts, I believe, at Primus Bank. And I've got the the bladder here to do that now. E D A given the authority to set these accounts up. But you and, I mean, you and I have got to go down there and physically sign the card once I deliver this to the bank. And I'll do that tomorrow on the next day.
We can maybe set a time to do that tonight.
Yeah, good. Well, let me go down there and see.
Okay, I need to call me up.
Make sure everything's in order. All we need to do is show up and sign the cards and good job. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Um I have, I have nothing to report. Number seven, we can dispense with the chairperson's report and move straight to unfinished business. Um thank you. So uh I would first maybe ask Ms. Williams to provide, provide enough Um, thank you. So uh, I would first maybe ask Ms. Williams to provide, provide an update on the farmer's market.
Okay, so. We have moved forward with developing a logo. Uh, we submitted our application to the school board. For use of the high school parking lot for the specific dates. That has gone back and forth for about three weeks. Um, but I think we finalized states. We um, we came up with issues during the school year, so May. And August, September. So it looks like we're not going to pull the market in May. It looks like it'll start with the first weekend of June. And it'll go through September, but uh, any. Late August and September dates, we're gonna have to shift the market. Later a little bit to allow the students time to get out of the parking lot. So um, I got a final email from um, the principal today saying that he thought that everything looked good. And it's going to the school board on the eighth. So we anticipate that being approved. We've created a Facebook page and an Instagram page and we have a series of logos that we wanna put out for public vote. Um, to kind of generate some buzz and get people excited. Um, and I have a meeting next week with the commissioner of the revenue to talk about um, tax and license requirements. Because I think there's maybe some confusion or um. Some things we need to iron out, make sure that. Now, the people who, the vendors who are attending are paying taxes or having business license. But maybe not unduty burden. So that's where we are. Good progress, I think.
Can I ask you a question? You start first weekend in June and. Weekly or every other?
Every uh, first and third Fridays of each month.
First and third Friday. And that's back at the parking lot, you talk at school.
As long as they approve it. As long as they approve it next week.
Yeah, okay, that's what you shoot for, first and third, right, okay.
Is there anything that we can do by show of support to help that, do you think? Would a resolution from our August body be anything that the uh, school board might consider as a show of support for this effort?
You could do that, but, but. We could also have a representative or representative. Attend the meeting and during their citizen comment period, which is at the beginning of their meeting. You could show some encouragement there. That's next Tuesday. Their meeting actually starts at six o'clock, but they have a closed session prior to their business uh, agenda. So I would say uh. Be there six thirty, quarter of seven. And then you would be in a good position to uh, be there for the whole meeting.
I recognize that typically we work in motions, but could a, could we just by an expression of consensus? Simply suggest that if there's a member of the body that would like to go and show support, that there would be no opposition to that?
I mean, I'll be happy to go because if they have questions.
Terrific.
I think that's more powerful than a, than a letter given than it's already Wednesday of the other week.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Sarah.
Yes, they meet at Hamilton Home. Yeah, sometimes they meet at the high school, but or, well, they meet at Hamilton Homes, but they meet at the front. Well, not the side. It's a front now and sometimes, sometimes they meet at the side, so. Yeah, let, let me verify, Sarah, where, where the location is. It isn't Hamilton Homes, but they have two locations and all of them.
If you could circulate to the, to the whole board in case anybody wants to.
Well, absolutely. I'll tell, we'll, we'll relay that. Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions on the, the farmer's market? Mr. Holder, if you'd like to give us an update on the Economic Development Director?
Sure, thank you. We had many applicants come in and uh, we as a group uh, had pared it down. And we have in-person interviews with a few of those on the twentieth of this month. So I'm very much looking forward to that to get to meet some of these candidates in person.
Are the um, the applications good? Team qualified?
It's a. I, I saw, I saw them and all over the place and um. Not what we, not what I maybe would have expected, but I shouldn't, you know. But, but nevertheless, I think we, we got a great panel. So whoever that right candidate is, I feel like we'll, we'll pick them.
Yeah, we got some good candidates, I think. We narrowed it to four out of the nine. Is that right? We've interviewed four.
We, we were, we were scheduled to interview four. One has now moved uh, from their location and taken the job, so. That eliminates that one, but you have three that we're interviewing on uh, on next Thursday.
A dozen or more total.
Mr. Ashcraft, just generally, I mean, from the county's H R applications, twelve candidates is, is a good showing.
Not too bad.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, given uh, I think we were always gonna be challenged with maybe the salary.
Sure.
And I think probably a, a more seasoned person uh, looking to relocate possibly. That salary would not have been an incentive. But the three applications that I believe that are the three people that they're interviewing, their applications do show experience. They do show an investment in the, in the profession. You're not gonna be getting a rookie. Particularly one has been an economic development director in a couple of different places. So I, I, it's a good start.
And we're still posted, right?
Yeah, until field.
Any other questions?
Just thank you for the support. Thank you for the administration and support. Uh, I do think it's. At some point. Are we gonna have a, a meeting or a call as a group?
As this group? Uh, that would not be in the process. Um, you, that was why the representation from the uh, authority was so vital. That you actually. Speaking for the authority and obviously I would encourage you to, if you felt like you needed to talk to the members individually. Before the final decision was made, that would be, that would be a good thing to do. Uh, but the process would be the, the recommendation uh. That comes from the group would be made to the county administrator. And I'm inclined to follow what, what the, the uh, the group does. Even though I'm sitting on, uh, I'm chairing the, the meeting. If a majority chooses one candidate over another, then that's what we will go with.
Oh, one, one question. I know on quite a few of the applications are higher salaries than we expected. How do we handle that?
A higher salary?
Yeah, I mean, were we budgeted for and a lot of them is coming in on the higher side?
I think uh, I think. That's open for discussion.
We have to come back to the board when I'm asking you if we decide to hire sir at that figure?
Yes, yes. Uh, I think it would be important to. To at least uh. Have somebody involved in that conversation with, with the members of, that are, that are serving on the panel.
Okay.
We always knew that was going to be probably the, the biggest, the biggest hurdle and, and I know the board's, the supervisors is flexible. To an extent. I mean, it is a, it is a new position in the county. But uh. There is some room to negotiate, I believe, if, if we feel like that we really have someone that uh, can just come in and just jump, jump into the. End of the game.
We hope none of those candidates are listening to this call right now to give them any kind of bargaining.
Right, that happens.
Are we um. I'm on that panel and unfortunately I cannot be. Involved in the interviews. I have another obligation I can't get out of, but will we narrow that? Will y'all narrow that down three to two or shortlisted or you're gonna decide from one interview?
You have three, you have, well, you could uh, you could ask, uh, choose to have them come back for a second interview. That's up to, that's up to the panel.
Yeah.
You know, this, this is a first interview, but.
Yeah.
It could be a first and final if you, if you. Think you've uh, you have a good choice and you wanna check references and. And obviously the uh, proper background checks and et cetera, but. Um, it could be, it could take as many as two interviews to uh, to follow up.
Well, I'll, I'll, since I cannot be there next Thursday, I mean. One of you wanna sit in on my place real. Since I can't be there.
Uh, we just would have to get the resumes to the.
To the, to whoever wants to sit in my place. What, what I'm basically saying is my. I will not be there, so someone else should maybe sit in my place, just so.
Was the, the twentieth at what time?
Nine, ten. Yes.
Was anybody interested or willing to participate? Well, thank you for the opportunity, but I don't think that anyone else can make it. Kenny? Don't mess up.
In Charlotte.
Uh, we got two. That's great.
All right.
Outstanding. Well, thank you. Any other conversation about the Economic Development Director? So the agenda has amended. I, I wanted to say thank you to Mr. Rose for, for taking another look at the uh, R K G study. Trying to pull out some of those, those, those things and, and organize them into sort of a matrix. Really what we're trying to continue is the conversation about priorities. Um, really hoping that we can get to the point that we have some real informed kind of approach. You know, so that we can help guide the economic development director in the first few days, that we can start to evaluate. Um, all of the requests for assistance in locating businesses here in Kingdon County. Um, and I was just hoping that we could have a brief discussion. I'm not sure if anybody had the opportunity to, to dig through that and maybe participate in the exercise. But insofar as anybody did and wanted to have a conversation about the priorities that they selected or if people needed a little bit more time. Um, we'd just like to open it up to anybody who would like to provide some commentary um, around that as an exercise.
You're talking about this matrix.
And, and if the answer is that no one's had the time to do that, then that's quite okay.
So one of the things that, that um. That, that became apparent to me when I was looking at, at, at these things is there are some things that, that require. A lot more planning and uh, effort and approvals and, and are, are a little bit more of a reach. So for instance, we just buying, buying property. Uh, would involve getting support from the uh, the um, the board of supervisors and. Figuring out financing. That's a little more complicated than some of the, some of the things that are a little closer in that really don't involve. Raising money. And so to, to, to me, the um. It, um, I think there's an opportunity to focus on what we think might be some of the easier things to go do first. And, and then which are the, which are the longer term things we wanna focus on? In, in an extended effort.
And I would also just chime in that I, I think. The example of, of doing. Purchasing a piece of property and, and, and providing some site development or deciding what we would wanna do with it. To, for us to be able to have uh, an, an understanding of. What we're trying to do. Is it from, from a, from a priority standpoint, do we wanna focus on helping? This is just a hypothetical. Do we wanna focus on helping existing businesses in the county grow? Or do we wanna focus more on bringing new businesses to the county? Cause if we're, we wanna focus on helping businesses in the county grow, then what we do to a piece of property and where we put it. Is gonna depend on the conversation that we have with existing businesses in the county. If we wanna bring new businesses in the county. Then we've gotta market that property in a different way or think of that project in a different way. So again, just trying to, 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 to narrow the scope. Of. The world of possibilities that exist from a, a land acquisition and development standpoint. Is I think the project that we're trying to, to move forward. So that when the Economic Development Director starts or when an, an opportunity presents itself. We are prepared to say, to the board supervisors, to a landowner, to a business owner. Um, yeah, let's get to work. Does that make sense?
Just a question. If, if we do pick said property and we wanna build a shell building on it. What, and I'm very confident that our uh, E D A person that we hired will be the one day to day working on that. Does that have to go out for bids? On a, or could we just pick said contractor?
You, you would have to procure the construction, yes. That would happen, but. Who you recruit doesn't.
But as we just heard, one of the benefits of being the Economic Development Authority is that the procurement policy of the county is not necessarily. Applicable to us. So we have some leeway, not that we don't have a procurement process, but that is something that we probably need to look into. Is adopting our own procurement policy. Um, that. Could be evidence of how beneficial it is for the county to work through us. Did you any kind of that, that site work or site identification?
I'm uh, I probably need to get up to speed on that a little more myself because uh. He mentioned at the same time in saying that, that you are a governmental entity. And governmental entities do follow procurement policies that are set by the General Assembly.
Yeah, from, from what I heard, he was saying you have, kinda have to have a reason, right?
Yeah.
If you need speed or something like that.
But most of the time for procurement, it's, it's to try to get the best price with the best quality. Uh, rather than just handpick somebody.
You know, I personally think we should put more emphasis on attracting new businesses. Of course, we wanna support existing businesses. I mean, I'm not turning my back on them, but. I think the people in this county want to see. Uh, real effort in trying to attract new businesses to this county. This is way off the.
And so I, I mean, I think that kind of approach would guide somebody through the matrix to try to prioritize those activities. That would be more aligned with business attraction than necessarily retention and expansion. So that, that's the exercise that we're asking folks to go through with the matrix. So that we can kind of look at what's in front of us, understand where we are as a body and maybe start to. You know, coalesce around an agenda and really start to move it forward. Cause I, I really think it's imperative. That when this Economic Development Director is on board, we're able to work with that person and with the board of supervisors. To create a set of parameters for us to, to start making things happen. And I think that the presentation tonight was very helpful in, in reminding us what some of those opportunities might be. And it was also very helpful to have you here to remind us that we have some resources to, to do some. I will not belabor this, but I would. Request everyone to return to your email, do your homework, come prepared next meeting, talk about it, okay? Please? So you. Or you'll be suffering, I'll, I'll censure you as the chair.
Oh, I'm definitely. Well, say what. Uh, you're talking about this matrix here and I like.
Yes, gee, yes.
We'll make sure I'm on the right page. Literally, right, Sharon, you want that place to live in?
It would simply be an extension of, of the kind of priorities conversation that we started last meeting and hopefully we can.
Just looking ahead, uh. Well, I'll let you finish in the new business, I guess, but. We didn't have much on the agenda and other than the centerpiece was Mr. San. If there's things that, before we leave here today, if there's things that members would like on the agenda. It's always good to get them on first and then we can always perfect it later.
And, and again, I, I'd have to apologize. I was a little bit late in requesting agenda items, but if there's anything that any member wants to bring before the. The authority, whether it's from a priority conversation or a specific opportunity, then please let us know and we will get it on the agenda. The industrial park, do you do wanna put that on the agenda for next time?
There was an email that, that I'll just come up. It was, it was an analysis.
Was that Commerce Board? Yes, uh, we did do an analysis of that and I, I've, I think I sent it to.
Yeah, you did.
If you wanna, if you wanna bring that up.
Does somebody wanna, do you wanna?
Cause we per, and it was written purposely without naming any businesses. It's just general numbers. But I think there are some, really some glowing statistics in there that deserve the attention of this group. Uh, particularly if you. Uh, particularly if, if you wanna go back and get it with the B poll.
It was higher than, the numbers were higher than I.
But the B poll is not, and we are discovering, uh, and this is a, this is a countywide issue now. That those who we think might have business licenses and paying B poll are not. And that's something that I have asked the board supervisors to, uh, put on their radar. So that the commissioner revenue can be addressing that issue as time goes on this summer. It's a good summer project, really. Uh, but B poll was, was a very low number for the number of businesses that were in there. And that's because they're not paying.
Are we not enforcing that?
Well, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a big issue, Jean. I'll just leave it at that. That, uh, I know the commissioner understands both me and the board's concern. Because you don't wanna overtax any business, you don't wanna put any, uh, uh, a burden of regulation. But the minimum to operate a business in this county is to have a business license. And if you make a certain amount of revenue, then you pay a, a B poll tax. And for that not to be showing up, uh, for every business that operates in the county, that's a concern. And, uh, and we have pointed that out to the commissioner and I've, and she understands, uh, where the board and. The, the administration, it's a fairness issue. Business A is paying, business B is not. Not fair. So there has to be some enforcement, you're correct, as we move forward.
So then let's add.
Yes.
Commerce Park analysis to the agenda, um, along with the general priority discussion. I would ask the members to return to that matrix and. There any questions about it? If you wanna have any discussion, um, I'm sure me, uh, is available. And again, I beg him for the time he took to develop that. Um, there was no new business identified for tonight. I would give this opportunity for anybody to chime in if there's anything that anybody wants to discuss in new business spaces.
You know, I can't keep, I can't keep things, uh, loud. It might got frustrated, I'm bothered, but it's nothing that. Well, okay, that could happen.
Hearing no new business, let's move right on to the citizen comment period. Mr. Garber, would you have any comments for us? Being the only citizen present. There is no comment. We simply thank you for attending our session. I've not closed the citizen comment period yet, Charlie. Point of order, sir. Okay, we'll close the citizen comment period. Yes, Mr. Mr. Pearson.
Oh, it'll be here. It'll be in the boardroom, yeah. For the num, for the number of, uh, of our team that's going to be participating, we, we have to come in here. We'll be around a big table, all the tables set up. It'll be in there.
I'm trying to bring up my calendar so that we can identify the date of the next meeting, which will be the second Wednesday of May, May the tenth. We'll be back here at seven P M. Ready to go. There's no other business for the good of the group. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Your second? Lot of seconds. Any discussion? Is there any opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.